Hello and Happy New Year 2025. I'm Keedar Ahmed, and today on Region Park TV, we're bringing you the latest from City Hall. We're diving into an important discussion from the recent Toronto City Council meeting, where they tackled some crucial issues affecting asylum seekers and refugees in our city. The council reviewed the Shelter Safety Action Plan, focusing on improving safety in its shelters and addressing the growing needs of refugee claimants. They also discussed changes to the contracts related to the lodging and community safety services to better support these individuals. However, a coalition of Black-led groups has criticized Toronto for neglecting systemic inequities in shelter access. Condemning the city's managers' response told Buzzman Toronto Report and the council's failure to adopt its recommendations. Stay tuned as we present a segment from City Council meeting, where the approval of this item on December 18 led to key decisions aimed at enhancing the shelter system and committing more resources to ensure fair treatment for everyone regardless of status. We'll take a closer look at the motion proposed by councillor Alejandra Bravo, Chair of the Economic and Community Development Committee, and hear from Gore Tanner, General Manager of Toronto Shelter and Support Services, as he responds to questions from city councillors and Mayor Liver Chao about the plan's approval and implementation.
I'd like to ask questions around the refugee response, where we are at with the strategy that was adopted. Earlier this year, there was a direction to ensure that we were responding adequately to the needs of refugees in the city, and one of the directions involved convening a Refugee House Roundtable that involved many members of the sector that I chaired. So I'd like to know what has happened since then and what targets we set ourselves with respect to this population and whether we're meeting those targets.
Thanks for the question and through the speaker to you councillor Bravo. So we set a target of opening 200 additional spaces in refugee houses or smaller settings. And in partnership with the membership of the table you refer to, we've opened about 135 of those spaces so far. Sorry, I'm just going to get the names of the places, but we've got Covenant Houses opened a site, the Centre for Refugee Children has opened a site, Romero House has opened a location, and we're working on several more. We think we'll reach that 200 spaces probably by the end of January.
Okay, thank you. I just want to run out of time. In terms of the... Can you talk to us about forthcoming changes from the federal government with respect to who is deemed qualified refugee for support? And any changes that the city of Toronto may be experiencing in the immediate future with regard to funds that we need to continue to provide those services?
So through the speaker to you councillor, the IHAPP program is a program that's assisted the city of Toronto in the last short while and reimbursed us for costs incurred related to this file, up to 95% of costs. The federal government has signaled and actually released criteria of this program that will start in the new year, and it will start to reduce the percentage of costs that they will cover. They're looking for the city of Toronto to cost-share more of that response. And in addition, they're looking at the category of refugee claimant and who those folks are and who they will fund. And so the impact, as we see currently, would be a reduction in the amount of money we could rely on from the federal government to support folks as they newly arrive into the country.
So they came through with money after mass mobilization of residents, faith communities, the sector, the mayor getting elected, the direction to ensure that we were treating people fairly, and now they're restricting who qualifies. And they have told us that they will be reducing the funding that's available. That's very concerning. And I think it's important for all members of council to hear that, to hear that that's the pressure that we're under. At the same time, I do want to ask, in terms of what can happen here in terms of better outcomes and people being able to leave the shelter system more quickly, who are asylum seekers and refugees, can you confirm that there are proven partnerships, proven strategies that exist and that we... that work can be accelerated?
Through the speaker to you councillor, certainly what we hear from our refugee-serving partners is that the refugee house model, smaller, more dedicated supports to support folks as they arrive and get them connected quickly to legal supports, income, employment supports, are very effective, much more effective than we see that are provided in the base shelter system.
Okay, and finally, I want to know whether at this time, there are any people... Is anyone is being prevented from entering a shelter based on their status?
So through the chair to you councillor, as you know, currently we see over 100 people per day that are unable to be matched to a bed in the shelter system. This council asked us to not look at that issue, even as we've continued to increase the number of refugee-specific beds in the system, but that's no longer the case, confirmed.
Thank you. Mayor Chow, questions?
So right now, the federal government has agreed to fund 95% of people that are declaring refugee status in Toronto, in Canada. And am I correct that next year is going to be 75%, and then a year after, 50%?
Through the speaker to you, Mayor Chow, yes, generally that is the reduction in funding that they've signaled to qualified programs that we may stand up.
What's the rationale that they give? That they are going to walk away and say that we... Say in two years' time, these refugees claimant, we're going to take care of half of them? Or we only going to take... Let's say if the cost is $200 per day, we'll just cover $100 a day. What is the rationale for that? It's still the same refugees claimants.
Yes, through the speaker to you, Mayor Chow, they, like us, want to see more efficient, cost-effective responses. However, I would suggest that this formula that we see in the funding does indicate their withdrawal from supporting this response.
Okay, so if they want more flexibility, let's say for $100... They have all this prescription on how we have to spend it. Are we allowed to give rent supplement to refugees? So then they arrive, that it would be far more financially... It would be a lot less dollar if we, instead of putting them in a shelter and providing food and security, all of that, because we are running a homeless shelter, it would cost, say, around $200, $300 a day, if it's in a hotel. But if they give us the flexibility that we would provide rent supplement, let's say $1,000 a month, that's a lot more efficient and effective. I don't believe refugees, we need to cook for them or buy food for them. They need some money to set themselves up. So is there such flexibility in the IHAPP money?
Through the speaker to you, Mayor Chow, no, currently that is not an eligible expense or the IHAPP program.
So the most effective way to deal with refugees claimant, as they have done for, let's say Syrians, Ukrainians, is to, when they arrived, we provide them with some funds. They then go and look out for some shelters, a rental apartment of some kind, a room maybe, or come together and rent a place. That is not available for this program. Am I correct?
You're correct.
So what kind of flexibility are they really asking for? If they want flexibility and effectiveness, the most effective and flexible way is through housing allowance, which is a shelter rent supplement. They said no? Have we asked?
It's in the guidelines, Mayor Chow, that this expense is not eligible.
I see. Is expenses such as... Who, that goes the... That argument in terms of being flexible, do they say that we will fund according to the number of refugees arriving? Or is it a cap on a certain dollar?
Through the speaker to you, Mayor Chow, they're seeking an application from the city of Toronto that would be due at the end of January.
So how do we know what is going to be this coming year's number of refugees? We may not know. We're not an immigration department.
Through the speaker to you, Mayor Chow, we have not ever received accurate or helpful data from the federal government on what to expect in the terms of the number of people arriving.
So the federal government is asking us to take a wild guess of the number of refugees that will be arriving at Pearson or anywhere, crossing border, and that will then submit dollar that we think we would need for this coming year. So they're not actually paying for the number of refugees claimants we serve. They are asking us to predict, right? Yep, okay. But what I've noticed is...
Last question.
Yeah, thank you. Last question. Since September 2021, the number of refugees have increased 10-folds. From 530 per night in 2021 to now, December 8, 2024, 5,509. So from 530 per night to 5,500. That's within... Pardon me, three years? Did you predict that in 2021 it's going to go up by 3-folds? Sorry, 10-folds?
Through the speaker to you, Mayor Chow, not only did we not expect that, I tell you, we're proud to say that we've supported 23,000 unique individuals over the course of that time, either through our shelter system and supported them into housing.
Thank you. Thank you. Councillor Mantas, questions?
Madam Chair, I'll share my time with the mayor if she still has any other question to ask.
What?
I'll share my time with the mayor.
Well, the mayor has already asked all her questions.
Okay. Through the chair to staff, has the federal government always paid their obligations to the city regarding refugee asylum?
Through the speaker to you councillor, you may recall in April of 2023 in the federal budget, they stopped all funding or signaled that they would stop all funding to the municipality for these services. And only after some significant organizing and intergovernmental work have we seen that money come back to support the services that we have in place.
So knowing the previous history and knowing what is signaling, you could say that they're not being a fair or honest partner when it comes to funding for their share of, or their obligations to the city?
Through the speaker to you councillor, we're very concerned about what this signal means for the future funding of this program.
So seeing also the geopolitical situations happening all over the world, you would assume that there's probably going to be an increase of people trying to seek asylum in our country.
Through the speaker councillor, the number of folks that are displaced around the world higher than ever as reported by the UNHCR.
Okay. So now seeing all this, but also knowing... Because this has come to council many times, and we've all worked on it through different committees. If an agency is federally regulated or has a federal charity status, shouldn't the federal government be the one reimbursing them compared to the city of Toronto for the work that they've done?
Through the speaker to you councillor, that certainly could be a vehicle that could be made available.
But it's not at this time, I would assume.
Not for the sheltering services that we currently provide, no. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Ainsley.
Thank you through you, Madam Speaker. Is there a dollar amount that we could put on what the federal government owes us or hasn't paid us to support our shelter system? Like, what's the gap? So if I was having a meeting with my MP today and I said, you know, you owe us this many millions of dollars to support refugees or asylum seekers coming to Toronto through the federal government? Well, is there a dollar value?
Through the speaker to you councillor, we've received one payment for 2024 in the total of $42 million approximately. We will look to reconcile costs for 2024, which will be almost $300 billion. We'll receive word on that sometime likely in March or April of next year. Defer to the city manager.
So through the speaker, I'd just add to that, I think, to your question about if you're sitting down with an MP, the real challenge for us is in future years. In 2024, we expect, as they have for many years, for them to contribute 95% of the cost, and we've budgeted for that. The drop, as the general manager is saying, to 75-25 and then to 50-50 is a large number that the city of Toronto would either have to match or look at reducing services. I think that's the conversation to have with MPs.
Right. So the number right now, as we're getting back to that cost share, is $300 billion?
It's estimated through the speaker to be around $300 billion, given our current numbers, which are dropping a little bit. So I would say it's between 250 and 300.
Okay, thank you. And then Mr Tanner, I wanted to ask about warming centers and the impact, I guess, that asylum seekers and refugees and other people are having on our shelter system, which I understand is full. And when I was looking at the stats the other night, for two nights ago, for example, we... Our warming centers are closed, but we have 137 people in them. Is... Am I understanding that correctly when I'm looking at that data?
Yes, through the speaker to you councillor, we've had two activations so far this season of warming centers, and our practice is that when warming centers close, because the temperatures go above -5 degrees Celsius, we keep the people until we can refer them out to an available space. So you could see occupancy days beyond when our actual activation ends. And within those folks that are coming into our warming services, certainly we are seeing a number of refugee claimants also in those services.
So two nights ago, we had 137 people. Warming centers are closed. We had 137 people still living in them by your statistics, because you couldn't refer them to a shelter bed anywhere, or a bed?
That's correct.
Okay. And then tonight, for example, if 137 people are still there and it drops to -5 and you have to open up the warming centers again, we're that further behind the eight ball because you already have 137 people in them?
That's correct.
Okay. And I guess my next question would be, we have 137 people in them and we're looking after them, why we would not just keep the warming centers open? As we experience in winter, and it's December.
Sure. And thanks for the question through the speaker to you councillor. During the first activation, for example, on the third day, our warming centers were full. If we kept them open for the duration of the winter period at that time, we would have no surge capacity when temperatures drop. For example, this weekend, they're going down to -15 or below. So we open them, we bring people in. When they close, we hold on to them until we can refer them into shelter. We clean them, we get them ready to go again, and we open them when the activation hits -5 again.
Okay. And should we be looking at opening or creating more warming centers? Because I know in Scarborough, we closed the Scarborough Civic Center, down the facilities. In your staff's opinion, weren't adequate. And then we opened up the new one in My Ward on Scarborough Golf Club Road, which is the only one in Scarborough. And if they're filling because of our other issues with asylum seekers and refugees, so should we look at reopening or renovating the civic center to meet that need?
So through the speaker to you councillor, this year we have seven warming centers, most that we've ever had before. Our winter response is approaching 1,300 spaces, more than we've ever had before. We'll continue to look for opportunities to open more sites that are suitable for the purpose and that we can bring on with operators. And so even later this month, we'll open Metro Hall. We're adding that to the mix. But you're right, suitability is one thing. Privacy, amenities, showers, washrooms are important.
My last question. That was your last question. Councillor Cheng.
Speaker to Mr Gore Tanner, is there currently a national plan as to how asylum seekers are distributed across services across the country?
Through the speaker to you councillor, no. It's... This is something that is missing, is a national strategy as well as locally, still a reception strategy, a reception center, to meet people in a dignified way when they arrive.
What happened to the welcome center? We heard about it two years ago. We've been asking for it. There's been roundtable discussions. Why is there no welcome center yet?
So through the speaker to you councillor, Peel has now opened the facility that is destined to be the reception center in a pilot way, but it is still not supporting the function as we had imagined it.
And is there the potential or interest to continue working that out? Because there needs to be a landing place that's coordinated, that helps people navigate and figure out where they're going to land?
So through the speaker to you councillor, we fully support and think that that should open as soon as possible. But to your first question, it needs to be supported by a regional and national strategy so that when people arrive at the reception center, after they have their needs met at a short period of time, they've got somewhere to go.
And we've been asking for this welcome reception center for how long now?
Through the speaker to you councillor, members of the community have been asking for this for more than a decade.
How many shelter beds do we currently have?
So last night, we sheltered about 9,800 people in the shelter system, and we have about 2,000 more in bridging hotels, so just under 12,000 people.
And what is the cost of operating all of these beds?
The total cost for all of our shelter spaces is in excess of $600 million per year.
And what is the division of funding between us, province, and federal government?
So through the speaker to you councillor, we've received recently, through the New Deal, you know, additional support for our shelter system to the tune of $200 million each year. But the city's contribution is just about $200 million as well.
Does the amount that we fund change with the percentage of asylum seekers that are in our base shelter system?
So through the speaker to you, we have been asking the federal government to reimburse us for the number of refugee claimants in our base shelter system. And so that is part of what we expect that they will reimburse to us.
And but that reimbursement is slated to decrease over the next few years?
Through the speaker to you, that's right. And in fact, they've said that any refugee claimants in our base shelter system would not be eligible for reimbursement from the IHAPP program.
And do you think that property taxpayers should be the source of primary funding for asylum seekers in our city?
Through the speaker to you councillor, the shelter system in Toronto cannot support the immigration system of Canada.
Right. And with regard to mental health and addiction services provided in the shelter system, are those covered by the provincial government?
So through the speaker to you councillor, things have improved quite a bit. We do have access to primary care and mental health supports in most of our shelters, but more is needed. More specific and timely crisis intervention and support, safe beds and other supports as people move into housing.
So with this proposed download to the municipality of the immigration system, we know a lot of asylum seekers want to come to Toronto. What can the city do to signal that we simply cannot take on this burden? What are our options here? Because we cannot absorb the potential costs that are going to come as this download is worked out into our budget.
So through the speaker to you councillor, I mean, part of it is what is underway currently, which is supporting the development and capacity of more refugee-serving houses and programs and supporting the sector. But certainly, at the volume we see, this is not a sustainable and ongoing response that the city can provide.
That was your last question. Thank you councillor. Next, councillor Chrisanti.
Yes, Speaker, thank you. So just a question and follow-up to a discussion we've had a number of times in the recent past. So our plan for decommissioning shelters, there's two of them that were a priority. One of them was in My Ward at 218 Islington. So a couple of questions there. How are we progressing with that? And is there a specific date in mind at this point in time?
Through the speaker to you councillor Chrisanti, so currently we are in the midst of decommissioning a program at Kennedy Road in the 401. And it will close likely by October of this year. We don't yet have a date for the closure of the shelter hotel program on Islington, in your ward.
And now to discuss, do you think you could undertake to get me some clarity on that date, maybe in the first quarter of next year?
Through the speaker to you councillor, certainly we will do our best and be in touch with you to let you know about that date as soon as possible. It is prioritized as one of the next shelter hotels to close. And as you know, we've just embarked on our large capital plan to open smaller shelters across the city of Toronto, which will help us in that process.
All right, thank you. So encampments. I see that we have made some progress. I just want to know, you know, we're finding shelter spaces for people living in encampments? Can you describe a bit where are we today versus maybe about a year ago? How are we progressing with that in general?
So through the speaker to you councillor, you know, Toronto, as many communities across the province has seen an increase in the number of encampments and people sleeping in public spaces. We, of course, brought a report through council and received support on our new interdivisional protocol. And so staff are deploying that protocol. We've recently ended encampments that were on a larger scale We've recently ended encampments that were on a larger scale at Allen Gardens, at Clarence Square, at Moss Park. And that work will continue as we're now in the winter months and hoping to get as many people inside as possible.
Okay. And just finally, your recommendation for it speaks to this council to authorize 3 million, about 3.5 million of reimbursement to, of course, the many churches and community members that came forward and stepped up to look after refugees over a long period of time. Is this money monies that have come from the province and from the other two levels of government? This is not directly taxpayer dollars?
So through the speaker to you, councillor, these are expenses that are eligible under the IHAPP program through the federal government, and we will submit them for reimbursement to them.
Then we'll be fully reimbursed for the 3.5?
We hope to be fully reimbursed, or at least at a 95% rate for these costs that were incurred in 2023.
Thank you, speaker.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Pasternak, you are next to ask questions. I'll wait for you to get back to your chair. You ready?
Yes, thank you, Madam Deputy Speaker. One of the problems that I'm seeing when it comes to our shelter services, and I think it's mentioned in passing in this report, is there's nothing to do for the residents during the day. There's a lack of programming, a lack of support. So they wander the neighborhoods, and that's when the trouble begins. Would you concur with that view of our local neighborhoods?
Through the speaker to you, councillor, not necessarily. We have over 100 facilities in the city of Toronto, many of them offer programming during the day. There's no requirement for people to leave shelters as there might have been in past years. And the staff and programs do the best they can to bring in services, programming, and to connect people to those important things to keep them busy.
Do all the shelters have a curfew?
Through the speaker to you, councillor, no.
So people can come and go at any time of the day?
There's a variety of program models within those 100 locations, some low barrier where people can come and go. There may be curfews in some programs as well.
So people can come and go during the day, and there's scattered programming?
Through the speaker to you, councillor, it's important these services are available on a 24/7 basis, as our outreach teams meet people all the time that are looking to come indoors. And the staff do their best to program these spaces and get people connected to employment, life skills, programming, and other activities.
Right. But if there are mental wellness issues or substance abuse issues, they could not necessarily enter the local labor market on that basis? Or is that a fair assumption?
So through the speaker, I mean, we have 12,000 people in our system, and there's a whole lot of different people with different needs. Certainly, there are some that are further from the labor market and need additional supports. And our staff do the best they can to connect them with those supports.
So back to my original point, is there a funding gap for daytime programming to support shelter residents, to keep them engaged in some way within a catchment area of the building, rather than have them wander neighborhood?
Through the speaker to you, councillor, additional supports from our healthcare partners to support some of the needs are gaps, certainly. And this report asks and seeks additional mental health, substance use supports from the provincial government.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. It's the holiday season. I didn't start your clock, councillor, so you could have gone on for an awfully long time, but you selected a shorter time. Thank you. Councillor Moise.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Deputy Speaker, I want to apologize to Mr. Tanner if I repeat any of the questions that have been asked already. In 2022, there was a change made in regards to policy. What was that change in policy in regards to shelters, I guess? The previous administration in 2022 made some changes around that.
So maybe you can clarify for me, Councillor Moise, in terms of what you're referring to?
Well, I know that the previous administration made some changes, took a different approach back in 2022 in regards to how we deal with the shelter system and who goes in and who's accessible, access it. So what was the policy change, and when did it take place?
So through the speaker to you, councillor, if you're referring to our refugee response specifically?
Yes.
Then I can tell you that in the late part of 2022, we made the operational decision as we were seeing many, many more people coming to the city to refer folks to the hundreds of beds that we were standing up at our refugee response to best meet the needs of refugee claimants and to keep doing our best to meet the needs of the hundreds of people that call us each day with a variety of other specific needs.
And how many refugee claimants are currently in Toronto's shelter system?
Currently, in the system, we have about 5,500.
Okay. I'm going to pivot a little to employment equity. Do our shelter staff or workforce reflect the community they serve, including management positions? We know historically that over 50% of people occupied the shelters are people who are indigenous or black.
Through the speaker to you, councillor, we've made tremendous progress recently in ensuring that not only our frontline staff reflect who are using our services, but also more senior positions within the organization.
Okay. In the Shelter Safety Action Plan, what actions are being advanced to ensure that black shelter employees and clients are treated in a way that is free from discrimination and anti-black racism?
Through the speaker to you, councillor, one of the things we found in our CAMH shelter study is that our black racialized indigenous staff were facing an incredible amount of discrimination in the workplace. And so part of our Shelter Safety Action Plan is to implement a new tracking tool so that we can track those incidents, identify where they happen in the workplace, and be able to respond effectively to create a safer environment, both for the staff and, as you say, for the overrepresentation of black and racialized clients that use our services.
And how are we supporting those staff when incidents happen?
So through the speaker to you, a variety of ways. One is to provide immediate relief in terms of those situations happening, to pull them off the frontline and provide support. Depending on the nature of the occurrence, we sometimes brought in facilitators to debrief situations that may happen. But apart from anything else, it's saying that there's no tolerance for these kind of issues in our workplace and that it needs to stop.
Okay. I'm assuming there are proper signage and those things as well, right?
Variety of signage around the shelters differs from place to place, but certainly that is something that is there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much. Any further questioners? Seeing none. Councillor Bravo, you are first to speak, but you're stepping back for just getting on my, for Councillor Morley to proceed before you. Okay? Councillor Morley, are you ready?
Hi, Anna.
Thank you. Let me just get that done and then turn the chair back over to Madam.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Through you, I'd like to just ask clerks to put the motion up. I do have a motion on this item, and with thanks to staff and my colleagues for this important work. We did connect directly with staff on this one, and as we know from the report we received earlier, we still have a lot of work to do. And so this was informed with some insights from some of our frontline workers on what is going to be helpful to stand up the recommendations here. So you'll just note underlying there, we're looking to ensure there's a completion of a robust consultation with frontline staff, who will be using the tools, completion of appropriate anti-black racism incident management training for managers and supervisors, in addition to the wider recommendation. And I appreciate the opportunity to speak to this. I think we, as leaders here in this space, need to continue to do our best work to ensure that the challenges that continue to plague us continue to be front and center, top of mind, and appropriately supported with tangible actions and tangible tools in place. So it's just a small amendment here to the recommendation. I look forward to supporting this item before us, and I hope my colleagues will see the value in this proposal here and will support it. Thank you, Madam Speaker. Those are my comments.
Thank you. Councillor Mantas?
Yes, my pleasure.
You're up to speak.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Colleagues, I will be voting no against this item for the only reason is that I feel that the federal government needs to be able to pay his obligations. These are obligations that should have been paid by the federal government and not by the city of Toronto. As our staff that have worked tirelessly over the years have mentioned to us, if we did not have to pay for the federal government's program, we would have more than enough space in our system, and we would not need to rent out hotels or any other facility to be able to accommodate. So I believe that, knowing that going forward, they're also going to be cutting our funding, I don't, in a good conscience, I cannot support something that is not our obligation. I understand that we are an asylum city and that we need to help, yes, but the federal government also needs to step up and pay their bills. So that's why, Madam Speaker, I will be voting against this item.
Thank you. Councillor Bravo, are you ready to speak? Go ahead.
Thank you, Speaker. I have a motion, and I'll describe it while it's put up. It's directing the General Manager of Toronto Shelter and the Executive Director of Housing Secretariat to accelerate the expansion of specialized refugee shelter and housing options to complement and enhance the city emergency shelter system, and that these be more effective and efficient, and they produce better outcomes for refugees themselves, that it be informed and delivered in partnership with the refugee-serving sector, and that it's built in collaboration with the federal and provincial government. And importantly, that it's consistent with this council's continuing advocacy for federal and provincial funding and support that is fair, given their area of responsibility. It also directs that we establish a refugee and asylum claiming shelter and housing external working group so that we're always hearing that voice and working well together, and that we want that the higher orders of government take immediate action. And finally, that we reconfirm the commitment that we made in the motion that the mayor championed and brought before us when she started at her first council meeting to ensure everyone, regardless of status, is able to come inside. And this is important because shelter is a first step to home. Shelter is the place where you are able to connect to services that you need. And for some populations, that means moving quickly into settlement. There is a huge provincial role in settlement that the province is not playing right now. I came to Canada as a refugee. When we arrived, there was a reception center at the airport. I did have a brief stay in a shelter, as I've shared before. My parents were processed. They immediately started working within three months. And that is something that is not available today for a number of different circumstances and for certain populations. The provincial government has a huge role, as Manitoba is playing, as British Columbia is playing. It's not doing it. On the other hand, it is not this level of government that decides who should come, what are the policies at the airport, how we're supporting people. It's not this level of government that chooses to treat one population, for example, like Ukrainian arrivals, in one particular way, and then treat other populations in a different way. That is not ours to do. But it is ours to tend to people when they are in our city, and that's a commitment that we've made, and that's something that the public wants. The only reason that we were able to get federal government support last year the way that we did was because of the concerted effort of councillors and the mayor who were pushing for this, and also the public service through intergovernmental conversations. But it was really the power of people on the outside that stood with us, faith leaders, community leaders, who said, this isn't good enough. We can do better, and that is what has happened. We need all orders of government working together. Regarding the Shelter Safety Plan, I think this is really, really important work that the public service has done. It was very brave and bold to invite CAMH to find out with us what was going on in terms of safety. And it's interesting and sad to see that for many workers and for many shelter residents, conditions weren't safe. And I heard Councillor Moise ask questions about racism and discrimination. And a lot of the, yes, workers are facing it, residents are facing it, and it's both, every member of that equation is participating in that in some way, and we need to change those conditions. The only way that we're going to solve a problem is to face it and name it and attend to it, and so I think this is really important. The plan that we have now to build 20 shelters that are right-sized, that serve populations, for example, I will be having a youth shelter in my ward, just blocks from my house. This is the way that we're going to set people up for success, get them ready for housing as we're building the housing plan. We cannot disconnect shelter from housing and good outcomes. The most important prescription for people to get better in every possible way is to have a roof over their head that supports them. And I want to say that I know I've heard some questions here about the conditions of people, who they are living in encampments. There are all kinds of people living in encampments, and I think that we need to get to know that population better. I want to just note one thing. One of the encampments in my ward in Dufferin Grove Park, half the population, half the people living in that encampment get up in the morning and they go to work. They go to work. So we have to get serious about this, and this plan is crucial for making our collective dream of having people inside in a safer, more secure city a reality.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Malik.
Thank you very much. First of all, thank you to staff for pulling together this action plan, and thank you to Deputy Mayor Morley and Councillor Bravo for the motions that have been put forward that continue to strengthen the conditions for staff who work in this really critical sector, and for the recommendations put forward about how we engage the sector and communities in this work that is laid out in front of us. We spend a lot of time taking action on our housing and affordability crisis in the city. And part of that is making sure that, as a priority, people have a safe place to be at night. And while we know that shelters, just like encampments, are not a solution to the housing crisis alone, we must ensure that people have safe places to be, like shelters, as they transition to permanent housing and as we do our work to make more options for housing available that are secure, that are affordable, and appropriate for the people who need them most. We also have a duty to make sure that the staff that work in our shelters and work in this sector are safe and respected in their work. And I want to highlight just a couple of recommendations from this plan that are really, really critical for us as we move forward. I was really pleased to see the investment in community safety teams. I've seen the difference that they've made in my communities in Spadina Fort York. They are an essential connection to our community, to be responsive to the concerns that I know so many of us here in our neighborhoods around our collective safety, reaching out to people who need assistance, and making sure that our communities are clean and safe and that we can be alerted to what is happening in a proactive and responsive way. I'm also glad to see that we're looking to address the wage gaps in the nonprofit shelter provider sector. We have heard from workers again and again about how critical this is. Some of the best people who want to give their care and commitment to this sector just aren't practically able to do that. And with this, we are telling them that we see them and that their participation and compensation and respect is important to us. This work is so important and very challenging, and you all know that well. It is some of the most challenging work that we will take on, and it is so crucial. And the folks who are doing this work on the front lines have to be paid well, and we have to prioritize their decent work in order to continue to make progress on this issue. This action plan allows us to be on a path to rectify this inequity. I look forward to hearing the report back on how this plan will be implemented, and also to make sure that we are learning lessons of the progress and the achievements we are making through our efforts, and in continuing to work together with city staff and our community partners and as colleagues on this council to make sure that everyone in Toronto has a safe place to sleep at night, and everyone in Toronto has a place that they can be proud to call home. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Cole to speak.
Yes, I just want to...
Yes, I just want to share my appreciation for the incredible work that our staff do 24/7 in dealing with a perplexing challenge. And a lot of it goes on silently and quietly unless there's some kind of emergency that, you know, sort of erupts. But we forget that there are 12,000 very fragile people in great need that have to be housed safely, have to be fed medically, supported 24/7. This doesn't happen without dedication, money, and expertise. And there's always going to be room for improvement. And I know this is an attempt to try and rectify some of the obvious gaps and challenges, and I commend everybody who worked on this, Counselor Bravo, Deputy Mayor Morley, everybody that's worked on this. I just, I find it perplexing, though, to see that sometimes people say, well, the city shouldn't be doing this because it's the federal government or the provincial government should be doing it, so therefore let's not provide shelter. Let's not fund the shelter system. Well, that's like saying someone comes to your door that's hungry and we say, no, no food for you because you should be getting food from the government in Ottawa. How can you say no to someone that knocks on the door in the freezing cold and is looking for a warm place to sleep and a bite to eat and you tell them, no, go talk to your federal MP? That's nonsense. We don't have a choice. We can't select the people that come into Pearson every day, the people that come across the border. They come to Toronto on a regular basis. So to say, well, it's not our job, too bad. Go talk to your MP. That's nonsense. So we have, whether we like it or not, we have a job to do here. We got to do the best we can. And I just also want to commend the Streets From Home people. I want to commend the Toronto Police. I don't know how many days I've been working with the police and the Streets From Home people to try to deal with people in encampments. They're all people suffering from various degrees of mental health challenges, health challenges. And so the police are very patient with them. I know the police have a 13 division. They talk to them. They call the Streets From Home. They work together. They know the Streets From Home people. They have their personal email and personal iPhone numbers. They talk to them and they try to get them into a shelter. I mean, we just got two husband and wife partners there. We just got them into a shelter the other day after they were sleeping in the park in my ward. Now, the other thing is, it is really frustrating to try and explain to people that you can't arrest your way out of the homeless crisis. What good is, I think the premier now said he's going to fine homeless people $10,000 if they're homeless. How in the hell is that going to work? You're going to fine homeless people $10,000 if they're homeless and maybe suffering from some addiction or whatever it is. Rather than trying to invest money in providing affordable rental temporary housing, shelter housing, why waste your time? Well, it's not a waste of time because it's a political maneuver that works. And you tell people, yeah, we're going to get the cops to get those encampments out. But you know what you're doing? You're playing whack-a-mole with the homeless. You're going to move them out of downtown Toronto. They're going to go somewhere else. Then they're going to go somewhere else. So you got to deal with the reality of the shelters that we need. And I tell people, I'd rather have a person in a shelter than sleeping in your backyard or sleeping in the park or sleeping in the TDC bus shelters. The TDC bus shelters have become like Doug Ford's new housing plan. That's what he wants people to do, sleep in the bus shelters.
Five seconds.
Sad to say. Okay.
Counselor Moise.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and three U. You know, many people are tired about hearing about anti-black racism. But I can reassure you that black people are equally tired of experiencing it. I know that when I first got here two years ago, I observed many inequalities, not only within this chamber and this building, but across the city. And I have to say that there has been improvements. I won't deny that. But I also talked about, you know, I saw firsthand how the Ukrainian refugees were treated versus how black people from Africa were treated when they came here about a year or so ago, 137 Peter Street, and how it was the churches who actually stepped up and filled the gap that, you know, we filled as a city. And I hope there are lessons learned from that. And I just want to thank Mir Chao, you know, once she came into here in 2023, and opened up the shelter system for everyone. That really did make a difference. It's really disheartening for me to hear some of my colleagues, like Counselor Mantis, say that, you know, because the federal government isn't coming to a table, that, you know, we should just not do anything. We should stand by and let them to fill the gap. Well, these are people. These are real people. They could be your neighbor, you know, a family member. We're all equal here. And I think it's important that we put people first, always, regardless where they come from. I don't care where you come from. I open my door with my heart to you and I will support you and advocate for you until the federal or provincial government come into the table. But we should not just wait for them to come to the table first. It's important to say that. I'm happy to see to the shelter safety action plan in place. I think it's important to support our staff who need the support. I think it's important to also make sure that people see themselves in institutions that, you know, represent them, for example. I know that for me, as a young person growing up, I didn't see myself reflected in the school system, in the administration. So therefore, I didn't actually aspire to be anything beyond what I saw and I grew up with. So this is why, for me, when it comes to anti-black racism and the CABRAC department, it's important we push all the boundaries the best we can to make sure that this very diverse city, you know, we also have the staffing in place as well in every corner of it. So again, I want to thank Deputy Mayor Morley, Counselor Bravo, for, you know, really championing and putting the best foot forward to bring about some positive change on this very difficult subject matter. It's not easy. Honestly, I sit here and I cringe. I wasn't quite sure if I was going to speak to this item or not, but, you know, I felt that I needed to. But let's really just try and do our best to support each other, support our communities, and make sure everyone, no one is left behind. That's all I ask. I hope that in a short time, that I'm here as a councillor, be long or short, that I will continue to help make a difference, make this city a better place to live and to work and to raise a family. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Cheng.
Last night, I had a very challenging meeting in my ward. We announced one of six locations across our city. And it was very emotional. A lot of people have questions and fears and they ask themselves, why are we in this situation? Why is this exploding across our city so visibly? And what we see is, our city is doing a lot of heavy lifting. We are constantly put in a position where we have to bleed money to put out fires because we value human dignity. But the biggest challenge here is that our governments, higher levels of government, are not doing their fair share. When it comes to mental health, addiction and homelessness, we need collaborative investment and coordination. None of these problems are unique to Toronto. And cities across the country are saying, we cannot solve this on our property tax. Our fiscal framework is insufficient. It is madness that this welcome center, so logical, have all the asylum seekers have a coordinated way to be received into our country and have a distributed way where they can be supported across our country. It's so logical. And yet I hear we've been asking for it for decades. And instead, we just keep putting out this fire and that fire. Shelter hotels, not a great solution for our finances, for those who live in these shelters and for the surrounding communities. But we can't easily close them because we don't have that collaborative investment. We are looking at potentially two elections this year. And we have to explain to all of our constituents, especially those who are irate at the encampment, at their local park, or the new shelter that's coming down their street, that they are afraid is going to bring complexity and perhaps risk the value of their home. We have to point the arrows. The arrow is that our three levels of government have to work collaboratively. We should be fully committed to solving this problem. In a country like ours, with the amount of space and resources that we have, this should not be a problem that's bleeding out on our streets. And so I hope that we will strongly encourage all of our constituents to get engaged and get involved in the upcoming elections and make it clear that these higher levels of government should not be dropping the ball. We should not go every year to beg for money as part of our budget process. And so this is a problem we need to solve. I appreciate all of our staff, as Deputy Mayor Cole so eloquently highlighted, their dedication. They are at the front line, seeing the human suffering, the lack of dignity for so many people who are working jobs and sleeping in tents. This is untenable for a world-class city like ours. So thank you to all who are making sure that we are doing our part. But we cannot keep silent on the important gap that exists in our system, that is the coordinated national and provincial plan to help solve homelessness, addiction and mental health. Thank you.
Okay. We're on our last speaker. Mayor Chao to speak.
Thank you. I began my political journey by attending a rally to say to the federal government that surely Canada can accept more Southeast Asian refugees. They were called the boat people at the time. This is 1979, 1980. And Operation Lifeline started. And within a year, it was successful, Canada opened up the door to 60,000 Southeast Asian refugees. A lot of them settled in Toronto.
Mayor, do you have a motion?
Oh, I'm sorry. I got excited. Yes, I do have three, four motions. It's in front of you. I'll talk about the motion in a minute. But did we have problem? Were these refugees in shelters? No. Did they have trouble determining their status? No. Did they have trouble sponsoring their loved ones from refugees camp to Canada? No. Well, it took about two or three years, but not five, not 10. And things worked out. Most, all of them settled in well. Look at it today. Today, in Toronto, we have 5,500 and, let's say, 6,000 plus refugees in our refugees claimants in our shelters. Refugees claimants are stripped of their dignity. They are out on the street because sometimes our shelters are full. They don't know where they are going. They don't know how to apply for refugee status. They don't know whether they can get a work permit or not. And it takes years for them to determine, for the federal government to determine whether they would become refugees or not. At the meantime, their life is on hold. It's a lot more expensive housing people this way, and it's certainly not effective and it's not flexible. I just learned on Friday that the program, the Federal interim Housing Assistant Program, had been changed dramatically. And it was just changed on December 6th. It'll have a huge impact in Toronto because it's going to rely on a prediction of how much, how many refugees are coming in next year. We don't know because the federal government tells us? Do they give any prediction? No. Did they tell us that between 2021 to today, that there is 10-fold of number of refugees arriving at their door? We don't know. They didn't. So as a result, and also is not flexible. So we can't take that money and say that, please, have a shelter allowance. It would be so much cheaper. It's more, allow them to establish a sense of community, and it's much faster. And we've always done it that way with the Syrian refugees, the Afghan refugees, the Ukrainian refugees claimants. They were fine. They settled well. Some of the Syrian refugees are now considering returning home. Okay? So they settled well, except the program got changed. And it means that more responsibility to us. And for some reason, they're going to cut it to 75% and a year later be 50%. Why? They didn't say. Is it because we can handle more? No. And on top of that, there is a policy that said during the time when you arrive to, let's say Pearson, until the time you file a refugee's claim, during that period, they're not going to take care of them. They won't pay. Well, it could take six months because it will require a lawyer. They need to know how to put in an application. During that period, the federal government said, we're washing our hands away. They're just the city of Toronto. You deal with it. That just doesn't work. It doesn't work. So we need the federal government to provide more flexible funding. It needs to be responsive to the number of arrivals rather than a predetermined number that we have no idea what it is. And also not cut their funding. It needs to be ongoing funding rather than having it come down. It also need the federal government need a reception center on arrival. So immediately, those refugees claimants can apply for a claim. I'm running out of time. Yesterday, the city added millions into the federal provincial program, the COOP program. We did that so that we can move 900 people out of, from our housing to our shelter system. And anyway, I'm running out of time. I'm asking you to support the recommendations in front of us so that we could negotiate a much better program with the federal government. Thank you.
Thank you. We do have a question for you.
Sure.
Counselor Mantis.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Mayor, I'll take a little bit further back in a couple of years behind. When you used to be the MP and sit on the Citizenship and Immigration Board Committee, isn't it the federal government's obligation, when a person declares refugee status at the first point of entry, to be able to assist them? point of entry, to be able to assist them?
Yes.
Right.
Absolutely. And they did that with Syrian refugees and did that with Afghan refugees.
Right. But with the Afghan refugees and the Syrian refugees, there was also a different policy because they were also dominated by communities and they were sponsored. But I'm just saying, when they come at the first point of entry, and it happens to be, let's say, Leicester B Pearson, which is in Mississauga, should not the federal government have a place where we can shelter the people and help them to be able to settle before they come as regular refugees into the country?
Yes, they do. Because right now, I'm in front of IRCC Canada.
Right.
I'm on their website.
Right.
And they said that they could provide a one-time household startup allowance and a monthly income support payment.
Correct.
So they could rent, except that is not available for the claimants.
So it's a matter of policy.
There's this artificial definition. There's refugees, and then there are those that are, that the federal government call asylum seeker. And until you become a refugee.
Yes.
During that period.
Correct.
Sometimes, or most of the time, the federal government believes that is a provincial responsibility. We just got stuck as a municipality while the federal and the provincial government debate whether asylum seeker or refugees claimants should be federal or provincial responsibility. We are stuck. We're stuck because they come to our shelters. The shelters are designed for homeless folks.
Correct.
Not for refugees.
Correct.
But given that there's no choice at this point, Councillor Bravo did a very, what she's doing right now is to say, "Well, since we have to serve people, we don't ask whether they are refugees claimant, refugees, homeless people. We need to provide support. So then let us build spaces, build a system or build a program that actually are able to meet the needs of refugees claimants." There are groups, whether it's Matthew House, Sojourn House, all of them do very, very good work. So we're partnering with them to provide real shelters that meets their needs.
But Madam Mayor, I commend your work, and I commend the work of Councillor Bravo. But seeing what the federal government is telling us for the following years to come, we're not going to be able to withstand the financial pressures for it. Like, it's going to cost us over a billion dollars a year. So how are we going to pay for this?
But Councillor, I understand your frustration. I share it. But at the meantime, what do we do? Because last year, in March, when the federal government, not only are they, this time they're at least starting and then cutting it more and more. Last year, last March, they basically set the program is ended. This is called Federal interim Housing Assistant Program. There's nothing interim about the number of refugees claimants arriving to our city. So I don't know, now, they are willing to extend it for a few years now, so it's not annual, which is a good thing. We won that battle. But we now need them to design the program that actually meets the needs of the refugees claimant. The way they design it is for it to slope down, that they will pay less and less and less, which doesn't work. Who is going to pay for it?
Does your motion help in assisting you with, to be able to speak with our federal and provincial counterparts?
Absolutely.
And that's your last question.
Yeah, that's a very good question. If you look at the first, if you look at the recommendations, number one, they said, "Give us the dollar that actually," like, stop what you're doing right now because it's wrong. Number two, "Give us the actual number of refugees claimants, not a, you know, whatever number that came, that people come up with, which is, you know, not necessarily accurate, actual number." Number three, "Make it flexible so that it'll be effective. It'd be a lot more efficient if we just give a housing allowance rather than having to find food, buy food, and cook food for them." Refugees don't need that from us, right? So that, the first recommendation is make the program more flexible, make it permanent, make it in a way that will work for the refugees claimants. Number two is that do what they did with the Afghan, Syrian, and Ukrainian refugees, okay? They had a reception center, they CBSA processed refugees claim at the time of arrival rather than having them drift out in the city and that we, you know, they don't know how to apply for refugee status. Do it then. Number three is to say, "Please, coordinate a national system because we are not the only municipality facing the problem." Number four is to say, "Allow us expand the Canada-Ontario housing benefits because you can immediately take the refugees that are right now in shelters in your area, in Council of Peruza area, in the different hotels, that we can then house them, close the hotel, have them live on their own." It is far more efficient. They have much more dignity if they can live on their own, have a sense of community, and be able to come together. And they will settle in Canada much faster, much better, as refugees have done for generations.
Thank you. Okay, let's put the motions on the screen.
Motion two carries unanimously. Twenty-three in favor.
Next motion.
Thank you so much for watching. Don't forget to like, comment, share, and subscribe to our YouTube channel. Also, follow us on social media, and for more information, check out our website.